I fly the Republican Institute of the flag of the United States. In due republic, for which it stands, one nation under God, in this bowl, the three, just this problem.
First of all. For her. Is there not a date on the elections?
Yes, because I know twenty two before sort of be busy election month already started. So vote by mail starts available to state that was vote by mail. This offer from all elections. Our town election primary, primary is our annual town election. Presidential. Vote by mail is eligible for all elections.
We can argue anybody else's last question.
Yeah, very good. So they, you know, they've gone out, they're starting to come back in, of course, already anxious. So first up, we have the presidential primary, which is March fifth. Because it's a state election, the state requires to be too early in person voting as well. And we only have to do one week of that. So we're going to be setting that up with the town meeting hall here. We'll set up some of our meetings since we've done it in the past. But we're required to have one weekend of a minimum of six hours. So Saturday, you're very strong for that. Because it's the last day to register the vote, it's going to be ninety five blocks in the line. So it looks like ninety five Saturday, just one day on the evening. Then it will be here in town hall for regular business hours during the week. It's funny, the state is dependent on the size of our town. So five hours, so it's fully that all didn't the same. So actually, one week should it has to be okay with business hours unless it's like when you want to change that. But I think we're very fortunate about that. People tend to do a bit of that in acid, maybe. Actually, it's only, it's required only one to for the primary, but I wonder when we get towards going to the presidential. And then we need, because if vote by mail was going on for elections. They're not changed to the in person voting for the annual. As many people try out, they could still require ballots, but I mean, I'm sure they could still come in and vote in love as big. There's options for that. I mean. The other I know is town leashing papers right around the corner will be available starting December fifth. As of today, this twelve positions going to be on the ballot. Still haven't yet, but anybody's coming in. I'm getting something I noticed, something I'm excited at the. The. COA, their newsletter they put out, I'll put something in there. It's in the website. It's to get them ordered out there. Probably put it on the sign, the papers are available. Questions, they contact us, find out what positions or. That's right, any questions? First of all, yeah, it's just going to be, it's going to be easy here. Kathy and I are ready to take three different election orders. We're going to hopefully try to get smaller senior orders to cover some of our room for in voting now in person hours and things. So it's not, it's a little bit of money there. Good. Out of the pocket or out of the account, because it's going to be busy.
Very much. Thank you for coming out tonight.
What's that?
It's a thank you for having our guys night of this day out. And then I've been here so far. Well, since you have been going on.
That's good.
Sure, I can.
Thank you. On a year like this where we've got so much going on, does, is that like already budgeted in or is that?
Yes.
Some part of, as you know, it comes every.
Yeah, unfortunately, because of the way the fiscal year falls, half of it falls this fiscal year, half of it will be in 2025.
Yeah.
So we budget, you know, unfortunately, with the vote by mail, a lot of the costs down. Postage, some of it's covered by the state, some of it, you know, it's a lot of, lot of postage and man hours of.
Getting happy.
Right, right, but it's in the budget now. Okay, so thankfully, because we spread this, this is. That helps. Just don't handle it, you sit there, see so much going on.
Actually, our financial director. We forgot my house.
Thank you.
My start looking like.
Thank you for inviting me. So here we have the financial review for 2024 today. So we did the first review of fiscal year 2023 close, look at turnbacks, collections, status fiscal year 24, where we. Look right now, spending revenue, we'll cover the fiscal year 25 revenue projection, taxes and growth. State aid, local receipts, available funds. And we'll also look at a budget projection for 25 for revenues expenditures, kind of the antique picture. Where we stay right. And then the last, we have a bonus, we'll look at other plus and bonus benefits, which is commonly known as full cap. So the first item, so slide number three, review fiscal year 2023 expenditures closeout. What we have here, if we have unspent appropriations, so essentially this is money left over from each department. So here we have a list of departments and this is the monies they had left over. In their account. So this is a plus. So when free cash is calculated, you have a plus and minus. So this is a plus. This is a good thing, this helps with the free cash calculation and adds to the number. So if these were closeups were negative, that's how you get negative free cash. Just that, it's not a good thing. So this thing has been responsible because budget, it's just a plan. So when you have a plan, sometimes the plan goes right, sometimes the plan goes sideways. So this is a good thing and typically at the end of the year, as you know, we announce the books. We, is, you know, there's transfers, which is common, there's some departments they didn't fare well and some departments fare better than others. So then there's monies that can be transferred into the accounts that there's a deficit. And then at the end, all the accounts, they need to be balanced and then any monies that remain, it falls to free cash. It's an online purchase. So we had approximately one million dollars. So you may think, oh, we have a million dollars of turnbacks. But if you look at the budget, budget is twenty seven billion dollars. So if you look at it as a percentage, that's three point eight percent. So almost ninety seven or ninety six percent, we got right. So that's an A, so good job, good work. So I think a lot of people, they look at the dollar amount, they see a million dollars, whoa, you have a million dollars. But if you look at it as percentage wise, it's not the, you know, the. So the departments, they continue to curb their spending where possible, because we still, we're still battling with inflation. That continues to impact departments across the town. Slide number four. So this is now the revenue side of the ledger. Property tax revenue is, as you know, was the major source of revenue for the town. We're currently at the twenty three, we're at ninety eight point five percent. State aid, we're at ninety eight percent. Local receipts were very well, well over a hundred percent. We talked about local receipts, we're talking about what did the exercise tax, building permits, as you know, with COVID. A lot of people, they were making improvements to their home. So we've seen, sorry, not tick that too for training. That's something that you can see in the next three years to be something that can be sustainable. So we've been budgeting conservative for that, because at some point, you know, I think. You know, people at home, you know, they're, they'll stop continuing doing that and then we'll have to make cuts to that, to that line. So it's just better to be conservative now as opposed to being aggressive and then later having to cut that. So property taxes for the tax title process. Two years, that will be on the percent, because real estate tax revenue, it is a hundred percent collectible. So ninety eight percent, that's excellent, but we're still collecting on that now. So future years, at some point, that will be a hundred percent. Slide number five. Which is the status of fiscal year four. The tax rate was approved on December seventh, twenty three by DOR, setting a tax rate of thirteen dollars and sixty eight cents per thousand. New growth was estimated, we estimated $200,000 part of the budget process. It came in at three thirty nine, seven sixty two. State aid, we kept it at level with the budget. Local receipts, we did estimate that just under $2 million of local receipts. However, even during this fiscal year, there's still uncertainty with the economy. Also, not the governor's recent nine C cuts. There was cuts to the state budget, nothing for local aid or for education for chapter seventy funds. But, you know, it also looks like for fiscal year twenty five, they're estimating two percent increases in revenue, which is a good thing. Typically, when there's nine C cuts, the next year, usually there's a decrease in local aid or in chapter seventy. So I think right now, I think that's a good thing, but we, you know, stay tuned, because that could, it could change, so.
And just before Kenny moves on to the next slide. In the nine C cuts that were announced, we did. It was published more specific impacts and our $25,000 earmark for public safety. That represent Meridian was successful in getting for us was reduced in half. We were going to use that to purchase new teasers. So instead of 25,000, you know, we'll get 12,500. And it's a small amount, but I think it's more representative of some of the caution that we are building into this coming budget. Because we don't know, we've already gone through and Maureen's gone through it as well. You know, late, mid to late two thousands, we're also in middle of the year, there were cuts that. Towns then had to either dip into stabilization or make cuts immediately. And we don't think it's going to happen, but we also don't have total confidence that we're gonna escape with, with nothing. So that's why in estimating state aid, we're just showing no change, not even a one or two percent, just keeping it as is. Because at least that's the messaging and as we go through this fiscal year and including at the MMA conference, governor is supposed to be speaking to give a better understanding as far as estimates. And they have a specific session from DOR reps on what to anticipate for FY25. All those things will get incorporated as we finalize the town manager's budget recommendation.
And I'll just add, I'm still scarred from the financial crisis. Like I do remember fiscal year 2008, 2009, those were tough.
Tough years.
Puff years, especially the mid-year cuts and then the next year. So those were very tough years.
Just a couple of quick questions, if I may.
Sure.
I don't, I know that the governor is making cuts, I don't know what nine C is.
So nine C cuts, that's part of the governor, part of the executive branch where they can have this mid-year cuts.
Yeah.
So what I've seen typically is they, usually they cut from the state budget, but then they could also cut from local aid. So or even chapter seven, so chapter seven.
They call that nine C.
Yeah, nine C, just means mid-year cuts.
Okay.
And how it would affect us, and if you recall in previous budget years, it's four percent of our total budget.
Yeah.
So that's what we're talking about. It would affect four percent of our total budget percentage of jobs.
Yeah.
And, you know, we're talking about chapter seventy, which we received just under forty thousand. And then there's local aid, which is UGA, the unrestricted general government aid.
Yeah.
So that's what we're talking about, making cuts to that. And then we would have to find those funds somewhere else within the budget.
Got it. Nine C is the specific citation of legislation that grants the governor the ability. So it's like how we.
Forty B, exactly.
We know it by the.
Yeah, I got it. Now I'm with Massachusetts loves it forevermore, I'll remember that. Just kidding, you'll have to remind me next year.
Hopefully that we're not faced with that.
Right.
Hopefully it will come up again, hasn't come up in six years, that's good.
You hear nine C cuts, it's not a good thing.
It's not a good thing, okay, so it's probably good that I haven't heard that.
Very good.
Yeah. And then tell me about the local receipt estimate of one point nine.
Yeah, so the one point nine, that's something we developed through the budget, we look at previous receipts, there's, there's additional slides.
Yes.
As I'll go through this, but we're, we're talking about what are people excise, building permits, plumbing, electrical permits.
Yeah.
Ambulance.
What is it historically?
It's been above $2 million. But you'll, you'll, I have a slide.
Is it this year?
So in fiscal year twenty four, it was one point nine million, just under two million. And you'll see, I have additional slides that talk about local receipts.
What was the total for 2023? Because I think that was the one you just showed me and it was two point nine million, so it was.
Yeah, so if this year twenty three, we budgeted two million, just over two million.
Yeah.
He had two point nine come in.
Okay, and the budget for twenty four is two million again?
Correct, yes.
Why?
Sorry.
Why? Why wouldn't it be closer to three million?
Also, so local receipts, they vary year to year. So it's, it's not a, just, it's not a flat, so.
So the two million is kind of the average this year, what was very high, but next year it could be below, it could be one point one.
Yeah, like, like for example, building permits, that's been a lot of.
That swings a lot.
That's been swinging a lot, so.
Okay.
I, I, we're, we're just being conservative.
Yeah, no, I got you.
Because if, if we do, if we go along for the ride with the swings.
Yeah.
And if the swings don't come in, then we have to cut.
Right.
And then we have to cut on the expenditure budget.
So that is a, local receipts are sort of volatile, they have a high variability to them year to year.
Oh, yeah, and DOR, they look at these much closer than anything else on like a special revenues or even expenditures and tax recap.
Yeah.
So you have to prove that you can bring in those receipts.
Yeah.
Because you don't want a revenue deficit and that's how you saw it. Could have.
They're not, they're not just looking at the prior year, they're looking at the sort of, whatever, is the ten year average is about two million, is that sort of, or? Like, what's the average we use that gets us to the two million?
You actually have.
I have a whole slide on this.
But we'll, we'll look at.
Okay, that's fine, I was just curious.
Just jump out. Year to sort of see.
Yeah.
And then make adjustments based on volatility that were being messaged from the state.
Exactly.
And also from next door and from the assessors, talking to them, what are you seeing?
Yeah.
And they're really concerned that while the number of permits may not change.
Yeah.
The value of those permits goes down, so that means you, we may still be as busy.
Yeah.
But we won't see high value projects, which then decreases our revenue.
Got it.
The same thing with people getting cars, all this stuff about the interest rates going up, people may delay getting cars. So you had the, the whammy from COVID.
Yeah.
No one could get any cars.
Right.
And then you have then sort of a low buying spree and then all of a sudden the interest rates now making them less affordable. So there's a lot of volatility, so we sort of build in a little bit more conservative, because. This year, 2025 could be when that hits, but we don't want to kneecap ourselves so much, except then, like, we're not capturing it accurately either.
We also, part of that number is also ambulance as well. So if you remember during COVID, there were some people who didn't want to go in an ambulance.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
They didn't even want to go to.
Yeah.
So that's something you can't predict, can't predict how many people or how many ambulance transports there will be in a year. So it's very, it's a very volatile number.
Yeah.
So it's, I mean, if we could predict two point nine, then we would budget two point nine.
Exactly, yeah.
But it's, it's hard to predict.
Totally, we'd rather be on that side of it than the other.
Yeah, so if we, if we did three point nine, we would have big issues with DOR right now.
Exactly.
Yeah, because we would be spending money that we don't have.
Thank you.
We're on slide number six. So this is where we stand right now through November, property taxes, so we're about forty percent collected. Receipts, we're almost at fifty percent, state aid, forty two. So in total, general fund revenue, we're at almost forty nine percent through November. So it looks like we're on target, that's, that's very good, that's excellent. Yeah, so essentially the slide is just telling you that revenues are being strong and we're on, we're on target, we're on a mark for fiscal year twenty four. It's a good news, it's a good thing. Slide number seven, so this is fiscal year twenty four expenditures through twelve thirty one. So looking at this through general government, safety, education, we're just about, in total, we're about fifty percent, fifty three percent halfway through the year. As you know, some expenditures are, they're not each month, some of them are seasonal, like snow and ice. You know, it's during this time of year, so not all expenditures are created. So some, you know, are at different times of the, of the year. So this is a good thing, I think we're looking good right expenditure wise. Slide number eight, so now we're talking about fiscal year twenty five, this is now the revenues preparing for the twenty five. Budget, so property tax levy, that's a major revenue source of the town. This gives you a six year, like snapshot of, of each category, property tax, state aid, local receipts. So we're projecting about four hundred ninety eight thousand nine seventy increase, which is about one point nine. The next slide, I'll give you a little bit of breakdown of what that includes. It actually, it is a decrease this year, but it's because of the debt service related to the Mendenhampton Regional School District. It's the Misco repairs and the Memorial School, that debt is coming off. So when that debt comes off, it also, the revenue comes off too. So that's when you have a debt exclusion, when the debt payments are done, that obviously the expenses come off the books, but then the revenue also comes off the books as well. Because it's an offset. Local receipts, we're increasing that by a hundred and seventy thousand, seven fifty. So overall, we're looking at a two point three eight percent, as Joe mentioned earlier, state aid, we're going to keep that level. We're hearing maybe a two percent, but we're not sure, we'll, we'll just wait for the governor's numbers to come out, which we'll probably see in a couple of weeks. But as you can see, two point eight, two point three point eight percent for fiscal year twenty five, just looking at twenty four to twenty five. This gives you kind of a nice history of each revenue category.
Thanks.
Hey, hey Kenny, can you, can I ask one question? This is Steve Byrne.
Okay.
To the chair.
Where, where is the two nine nine six on that one? So I see the one nine nine six, where's the two nine that you guys were just talking about for local receipts?
That was twenty three.
That was twenty twenty four.
So that was fiscal year twenty three and that's slide number four.
It was, it wouldn't it be on this?
Slide number four.
I think, I think what he's asking is, is this what we budgeted versus actuals, what was generated? On this slide.
Because the FY twenty three recap here.
Oh, so.
Local receipts.
All right, so what this is, so the recap, this is the amount that we budgeted. So these are all budget numbers, these are not actuals.
Actuals, right.
These are the recap.
Yeah.
So there's always a difference, so it depends on what you're looking at. So there's the recap, there's the amount that was budgeted, and then there's actual. So there's, at times when you're looking at certain reports, they can be three different, they're three different numbers.
That makes sense, Steve.
Yeah, that, that's what I was figuring, that we're looking at all budget, not, we're not looking at any of the actual activity that's happening, that's fine. I, I just wanted to make sure that the one nine nine six that was there wasn't supposed to be two nine nine six and then I didn't see the two nine anywhere, so I'm good, thank you.
Yeah, so when we're looking at fiscal year twenty five, we're looking at the budget.
Yeah.
What we're going to be budgeting for revenues.
We need those Hawkeyes, Steve, keep them coming. That's a good one.
Slide number nine. So what we have here, we have a tax levy forecast for twenty five. So I'm going to just focus on fiscal year twenty four and twenty five. So the prior year levy, that's just the carry forward from the previous year. What everybody commonly refers to pop two and a half, that's six hundred and one thousand nine oh one. New growth, we're projecting, we're estimating two hundred and fifty thousand. So if you look at the last five years, I mean, it's varied, I mean, it's a moving target. I mean, it's been as low as two sixty four, eight thirty one, and it's been high as forty six, oh, forty seven. You don't want to be caught on the other side of that, because if that's the case, then the revenues have to come from somewhere else. So just in discussions with the, you know, the assessments office and the, also the building. We've, we're going to estimate, we're claiming to estimate two hundred and fifty thousand to be conservative.
So and as a reminder, we don't have any more units at Upton Bridge. And building activity over. At the other fifty and over. She's soft. Call this street. Um, that's really slowed right now. And so when we look at some of those new building permit activities available lots. The supply of undeveloped, ready to be developed lots has really dropped down.
Drying up a little.
Right, so that's where, you know, we, we start in the fall, looking at these numbers, reviewing with, with permitting, conservation and planning. Just identifying what is in the pipeline and what's basically, are we running out of? And that's, I think, what is also captured here, because when you look at those other years, you had a better idea as far as what activity was out there and other projects. And it is drying up.
Yeah, I mean, some years we budgeted three hundred, three fifty, because we know that there's some projects out there, but, you know, as you said, as Joe mentioned now, now it's starting to dry up, so we want to be conservative.
So, so if I might.
Yes.
Basically, you're talking about between two and a half and then about eight hundred and fifteen thousand.
Yeah.
On the whole, on the whole side, maybe again, maybe something happens. But that's basically what we're talking, talking about. And if I can just make one thing, and I know I came late and I had a. We're talking about ambulance runs. We are throwing an awful lot of runs to two oh six Milford Street. And a brief conversation I had with the fire chief, the police chief today. I'm not so sure we're generating a lot of revenue out of those runs, because a person down there doesn't have insurance. I don't think we're getting anything out of, is that reasonable statement?
That's a good summary of the conversation, yeah.
And, and we got really an awful lot of runs down there. Reserving conservative.
That, I was just going to say.
Yeah, and, you know, also, you know, said, well, okay, there's potentially a forty B, but without a comprehensive permit being issued, without any sort of idea as far as could there be an appeal? Have no idea where that could, could hit, so would never think about that as, oh, well, maybe we'll get that, just it's not even on, on the rate. Until you, you know, like they're starting to pull permits, you're not really capturing any of that. So if anyone points to that, well, we could have another development, that's still another fiscal year or two away.
Have we collected much on the collecting taxes at time of our events, do you know, Kenny?
Um, the last I talked to Belle, I believe so, that I've, I've asked her that question, she said, you know, that, yes, she has, like you mean, you know, with like the supplemental, yes, yes.
Come on, that was your big thing, you should take. You should get half that money or something, just kidding.
I would, I'd like it.
To be clear. You never know these days, you know, somebody's going to take that snippet and be like, oh, Simms is trying to give away.
I never take anything out of.
Right, I know, I take it all back.
The net levy increase is eight hundred and fifty one thousand nine oh one, it's a slight decrease from the prior year by sixty six thousand seven ninety four. And that, that is because of, you know, just want to be conservative. Another thing I do want to point out, so the debt exclusion levy, so this year twenty four, it was a million six, five twenty one. This year, it's six forty two, two oh, two oh three. That is the Memorial School and the Misco repairs, that debt is coming off. So that's why the amount is, there's a decrease of three sixty four, three eighteen. So we're looking at a net increase to the levy, four hundred and eighty seven thousand five eighty three, which is a one point nine four, it's not, so it's less than two and a. So it doesn't go, as, as Mr. Clarity knows, it doesn't go two and a half each year, there's always plus and minuses. You know, there's the two and a half, which we did, which we did get with the six oh one nine oh one, but it does, there's a new growth. And then in this case, the debt exclusion, the debt's coming off, so there's a decrease.
Do you, do you have access, what the excess levy capacity is here?
I didn't have that, it's, it's part of this, but it's typically in my other presentation that's coming later. And I thought, there's a lot of numbers here, as you can see, I love this, I mean, I love numbers, so I apologize. But I'm just trying. But I'm just trying, you know, stay focused on that. So the next line, slide number ten, state aid forecast. I mean, as as you see, even from fiscal year two thousand nineteen to twenty twenty four, you know, net amount, it's gone up from seven thirty six, seven ninety two to nine seventy four, five eighty. So so it hasn't gone up a lot, I mean, there's been a gradual increase, at least it's not decreasing. But just the different components, chapter seventy, it's been, it's been flat now pretty much since, you know, twenty twenty, we did get a little bump up from that nineteen to twenty. So we're just a tick under forty thousand. And then the different general government, state aid, components like UGA, Veterans Benefits, the exemptions. Also state owned land as well, public libraries, that's a, that's actually an offset, that's part of special revenue that the library utilizes annually. So total estimated receipts, it's a million fifty eight thousand six oh three. However, there are assessments, there's chargebacks of eighty four thousand sixteen, so the state give up and they take it away. They're good at.
Yes.
Yeah. So just to, as part of this, just to remind everybody about the nine C cuts, so that's what we're talking about, those mid-year cuts would be coming from these revenues. And like, in the previous years, it's about four percent of the budget. Slide number eleven, so this is the local receipts forecast. I tried to put the bigger numbers here, so motor vehicle. As you can see, it's been going about a million, just under a million, and a three, a three year. Total, total receipts for your average, a million nine sixty three, a five year average, we're talking about a million nine forty one eight oh nine, based off the recap. So those components, motor vehicle, that I just talked about, penalties and interest, taxes and excise, it's about eighty five thousand. We do receive a small pilot payment from a federal land, it's about two hundred dollars. Then there's, there's fees that we collect, it's about a hundred and twenty nine thousand. Other departments of revenue, which is like the ambulance, trash, that's five hundred and sixteen thousand. License and permits, a hundred ninety four thousand, that's your building permits, that's your plumbing, electrical fines and forfeitures, twelve thousand eight hundred dollars. Those are court fines, you know, it's probably exceeding tickets as part of that number. Investment income, we're projecting about thirty thousand dollars. Interest rates are on the rise, however, we do a storm, no, for how long? So we're looking at estimated local receipts of two million one sixty seven oh oh two. Last year, as I, as I mentioned earlier, it was just under two million, and you see the three year, the five year average, so we are, we are above that, what we've been budgeting. Slide number twelve, just talk, what we just talked about, is about an increase of a hundred and seventy thousand, which is about eight point five five percent. Slide number thirteen, free cash certifications. So as you can see, shows here from fiscal year nineteen to twenty four, it's ranged from two point eight, sorry, two point one million to three point five. We've had free cash articles ranging from one point three to one point seven. So this is the remaining amount of free cash each fiscal year. So after, you know, we've had free cash certified, we appropriated, this is the amount that's remaining. So as you could see, year over year, the the increase of free cash. So we've, we've ranged about twenty to thirty percent. However, last year we did have about fifty two percent. So whatever amount of free cash you don't appropriate, it just rolls into the next year. So as an, as an example, in fiscal year twenty two, we had seven hundred and twenty four thousand remaining. And then free cash came in at three million, but part of that three million was the seven hundred and twenty four thousand, that was part of that. So the new free cash amount was two point three million, so the same thing happened. So that two point, so the one point six rolls into to the next fiscal year to three point five. So depending on how much we appropriate of free cash at the annual town meeting, whatever is remaining will go into the next, next year. So right now, we're about eighty nine percent of the amount of free cash that would roll. So we didn't have any articles, so that's how free cash has been increasing, so if you don't appropriate it, it's going to, it's going to increase.
So ba- basically, that, that second line, free cash articles that were by town meeting, that twenty twenty four. That is the special town meeting, the articles we just funded. You'll see later on in the meeting, in the list of articles, there are also funding articles for capital projects, which then you'll see being proposed to be used for free cash. So that would draw that that down. So that last column, that will fluctuate as we go through, and town meeting considers other requests.
Yeah, so about average, it's been about five hundred, seven hundred thousand that we've let roll into the next year, because you want to be conservative. You know, as far as free cash, because it is one time money, it should be used for one time expenditures. Slide number fourteen, so there's other reserves other than free cash. So there's the stabilization fund, which is also known as the rainy day fund, we have almost, we have two point eight million. And then we also have a capital stabilization fund, which is two hundred and six thousand. So this is also one time money, and it should be used if we ever do, we have a rainy day, which hopefully we won't, we'll have sunny days. But if you do need those funds, they should be used for one time uses, because it is one time money. Slide fifteen. So the expenditure budget strategy, obviously, we want to budget conservatively. We want to limit, you know, the existing programs and fixed costs, because they keep increasing, like pension keeps increasing, insurance keeps increasing. So managing that. So total net estimated revenues, we're projecting twenty eight point six million, and that's about an increase of about two point three percent. We're also concerned about nine C cuts. You know, hopefully that won't affect fiscal year twenty five, as you know, you know, we mentioned earlier, it could be a two percent increase, so we'll have to stay tuned for that. The town manager did recommend to town departments or the committees that all the fiscal twenty five budget requests be a level service budget. The revenue expenditures numbers for fiscal twenty five could change part to the town meeting. So right now, this is just, we brought all the requests, we're just trying to see where where we're at. And then we'll have further discussions, and then we'll have the recommended budget from the town meeting here. Slide sixteen, there's an article on M A about the nine C cuts, so if anybody's looking for a late night reading.
It's gonna be me.
Feel free to go to the website and read about nine C cuts. Slide number seventeen, so this is more of a bird's eye view of fiscal year twenty five budget. So the first line, just property taxes, personal property and real estate, there's an increase of about nine hundred ninety one thousand, which is about four percent. The next line is the debt exclusion, as you, as I mentioned earlier, it's about decrease of three hundred and sixty four thousand to that. Small increase to state aid from the prior year budget, we're also increasing motor vehicle excise. Taxed by twenty five thousand dollars, and then just some small increases to other departmental revenue, investment income. So it's about a net increase in revenues of six hundred and sixty five thousand seven fifty two. So it's a two point three eight percent increase in revenues. And then on the expenditure side, general government, which would be, you know, the selectmen, town clerk, finance department, those types of departments. We're looking at about eighty four thousand dollar increase, just one five percent. Public safety, we're looking at a hundred fifty eight thousand dollar increase, four percent. That would be your police, fire department. Next is education, I did break out education between the salaries, which is the the stipend. And then also operating, so we're look, we're projecting a three percent increase, so four hundred and sixty five thousand dollar increase. So the next line, as we talked about, so if the, the revenue is going away, the expenditures also go away. So that's why you see a decrease of three hundred and seventy thousand, that thirteen thousand seven two two, that's related to B V T. So that's why that's still there. So if you netted it, originally I had the two amounts netted, there would be about like a one percent, you know, increase. So I thought it'd be better to show these lines separately, so you can see that. So I thought it was a little misleading, it looked like we've been giving the schools, the schools weren't getting a one percent bump. But I thought it'd be better to show the two lines separately, so you can have a better picture.
Yeah.
On how we're budgeting for that.
Okay.
Yes.
Which school has been found out last year? There's another elephant in the room, that's not okay. You don't know how many, how many kids you're gonna acquire, how many kids, uh, kids are gonna get in. You know, it were numbers thrown on, it was between three and five, like, I don't recall what it was. But, you know, all of a sudden, you get five kids from Upton, win it. I think the, our county tuition is twenty six five, I believe, for, for kid, plus you have the transportation factor to be thrown in you. So. If there were five kids, you can hundred thousand dollars, you know, I think we only end up three, I don't, I know.
We, last year, we budgeted for the anticipated four. And.
One didn't go.
Right, so we're still anticipating, we're going off of last year's budget. We didn't reduce down Norfolk Aggie, so we're going off of what was approved for F Y twenty five to give us a wiggle. So if we did get another one, then at least we had it to absorb. If we get two, then that's when some of the math starts.
We, we. I know I made.
Yeah.
How many departments?
Yeah.
How many?
Yeah, for example, we could have, in the fall, we could have reduced the appropriation for Norfolk Aggie by about thirty K. We didn't want to do that, because you didn't know what kind of change. And and if all of a sudden you're trying to then really anticipate, it's kind of bite us. So we're just trying to keep it up and and, because before, we just told Mendon Upden, here's what it is. And then they did the, making the math work. Now that it's on our shoulders, we want to make sure these sort of fluctuations were not heavily impacted.
Absolutely, it shouldn't have been that useful.
It shouldn't have.
It, 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 so basically, in fact, who was paying for any kids coming off of Aggie?
Yeah.
It, uh. This is, sorry, I'm really, if you're going to work on that, it's probably out there, they, uh, it's supposed to be out.
Thank you for the work. Thank you for the work that you and Mr. designed it.
The next item is public works, small increase there, thirty eight hundred. And then some of the, the next health and human services, which would be Board of Health. E S S C O A, cultural recreation, which would be a library, twenty and a half thousand dollar increase, debt service decreasing by sixteen hundred. See, the largest amount would be the community center as part of that number. And then the, the state assessments, we're showing no change at this point, that will change over time. Employee benefits, building insurance, health insurance, just also pension as well, as part of that two point eight million dollar budget in number for twenty five. So we're looking at an increase in two seventy six, ten percent increase. And then the last two items are the the articles. And last year, we showed it within the budget, I think we showed it in public works, but this year, I thought it'd be beneficial for you to see the articles for town roads. And also the assessment recertification, so we're looking at a hundred thousand for town roads and the assessors recertification at ten thousand. So we have a balanced budget of twenty eight point six million, increase of expenditures, six sixty five, seven fifty two, and a two point three twenty percent. We have to, we need a balanced budget in order to do that, to do that, so it's part of that exercise. So any other questions on twenty five, before I move on to the bonus round?
I don't have any questions, thanks.
No, I'll say, yeah.
Okay, so slide number eighteen, O P E D, I know we've talked about O P E D over the years, so we just recently had a report done. It wasn't a full evaluation, it was a roll forward. So O P E D essentially is just, it's retiree health insurance. So our retirees, you know, they have health benefits, providing health benefits for our retirees, so that's what we're talking about, we talk about O P E D. So with the recent, you know, report, we're looking at an O P E D liability of six point nine, almost seven million, which is good news. I thought at this point, we would be well over eight million dollars, kind of the trend that I was, we were looking at over the last several years. So we're looking at about a five point six percent increase. And we have assets of about one point two million, so from the last report, we have nine thirty, nine hundred and thirty nine. So it's, it's increased by thirty percent. So our net O P E D liability, which I feel is very manageable, I know when I've talked to radio agencies and S and P. The five point seven, I mean, and this is something, it's an issue, as we've talked about in the past, it's not just particular to town, it's other towns and cities in Massachusetts, and also nationwide. So right now, we're looking at about seventeen point five percent as far as funding.
What's the, at some point, what's like twenty thirty five, it's supposed to be?
That's pension.
Okay.
So my, my recommendation with O P E D, I think we should continue the course, the plan. Because there's no statutory, you know, mandate to fund O P E D. So we've been funding a hundred thousand dollars annually, just, I think it's a great thing. But then at some point down the road, I think, maybe perhaps in twenty thirty five, once you see a lot of retirement systems being fully funded. I mean, we'll always have to pay something into the pension or to what's for regional retirement system, but you're gonna see a large drop off, what they call a pension windfall. So I, my recommendation would be is once that pension windfall, the day when that comes, to divert a large amount of those funds into O P E D. And I think that's when you'll start to see a mandate from the state, you know, I would say probably ten years from now, probably see something from the state. Somebody will see. So slide number nineteen, I just want to thank Sandy and also the finance team as far as putting, gathering the information and sending it to K M S actuaries. Next year will be a full evaluation, so we'll have to gather all the data to send to them. So now it's becoming an annual endeavor, endeavor. We previously used to be every three years, then it was every two, now it's every year. Every year we have, because it's a, it's a requirement, gap is seventy four, seventy five, so as part of the audit, they need the report. So I mentioned earlier, you know, it's significant five point seven, but I believe it's manageable, and we increase it one point five. So part of the O P E D report, they are recommending that we should contribute seven hundred and eighty five thousand. And then, you know, as I mentioned, there's a lot of competing needs, so I think we should stay the course and contribute a hundred thousand. And then in twenty thirty seven, we'll have a pension pension windfall, and then we can divert those funds over to O P E D. So I, I think we should just stay the course and fund a hundred thousand, hundred thousand dollars. And then slide twenty, I just want to also kind of take you back ten years. So as part of the two thousand and thirteen report, we had no assets, and we had a liability of four point one at that time. And then on a part of the valuation on July first, two thousand and fifty, which is fiscal year sixteen. That's when we made our first contribution, I think we made a hundred thousand dollars, but I think there was, there was losses, about five thousand dollars. So as you can see, the liability. Um about 5,000 dollars, so as you can see, the liability at the time, it was almost 7 million. Um and we had an asset of 5,000. So I think we've, you know, just to show you where we were 10 years ago, who we are now, uh we're we're doing much better, doing well. That is all I have, that's the end.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
On this fine, wonderful night.
Yes.
Great report, too.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Drive the apple.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is common fictional license application for Three Farm Street Coles Kitchen, Cody's owner applicant.
Uh no, I don't believe so.
No, then. Does anybody have any questions on it? I know we've been waiting for the transfer.
Sorry to you guys, I don't have any questions.
Thanks. We have a motion.
I move that the select board vote to approve the common fictional license application submitted by Cody's Kitchen at Three Farm Street Upton.
Second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous action. The next one is common fictional license application for 66 West Main Red Rock Grill and Bar Stella. How you pronounce the last name? Cool, Corculiotis.
It's probably close, I can get.
Anybody here for that? Any questions? This is the other ones who was waiting for us, so yes. All set?
I move that the select board vote to approve the common virtual license application submitted by Red Rock Grill and Bar at 66 West Main Street Upton.
I second your motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous action. We have a 2024 annual license renewal for precision auto. Is anybody here?
We don't have anyone here for that. Um one of the things, and tried to capture this because also today when I was talking to Michael. Um uh one of the things I want to make sure for the board. Separating now the repair business from the sale of motor vehicles. There's a lot of compliance issues with code, fire, board health on what I, my understanding. Is the actual business of the repair, dealing with the paint shop, dealing with um exhaust, all of the permitting that's needed by DEP. But that's not um associated with the class two. They may repair and then sell what they repair. Um but this is on just the sale and they could have someone else doing cars, car work offsides while they line up. All the other inspections. Um and um therefore, if there's still enforcement that has to happen with the uh precision auto repair business. Um it doesn't impact from a licensing standpoint, the sale of used cars. Um so that is just a distinction I'd like to make between what is a class two license. Because it's specifically about the ability to buy and sell secondhand motor cars.
Can we make a motion to that effect until we have the information from Board of Health, code enforcement, and buying department inspections?
I have that in the motion.
And I have a, I have a question, if I may.
Yes.
The class two license that we're talking about, is that the license that states they're only allowed to have five vehicles on property?
Uh that um uh I have to look to see if we've limited it or whether or not that was from something from the zoning board of appeals.
Okay, because I know.
It was the zoning board of appeals, they'd have to go back and it would be just a zoning compliance issue.
Because I know when we get our inspections for border health, part of the license what they, was that they only have five vehicles stored. When border health went in, they had 39 vehicles. So that was a tremendous increase over what was allowed. But I don't think we broke it out, we just went in and and did our findings. And our reinspection is tomorrow, and they are aware, we're coming tomorrow.
Yeah.
So, um but you know, if you're only allowed five and you have 39.
And that's where, are they selling 39 or it's just, okay, if they go up to stand?
I, you know, that's, that's code, that's.
Yes.
That's ZBA. I don't know, but I know when fire was going through. Some of the concern where there were so many vehicles on property, the fire exit doors were blocked.
Good luck.
Yes, um with multiple cars in various states of repair that would not be moving if.
Yeah.
Forbid something happens, so.
Yeah.
Um I just don't know which, you know, I saw this here, and I I can report as part of the board of health that. The auto repair, the vast majority of violations, we saw photos, that there is an inspection tomorrow, but we've seen photos. And now I think, if I can speak out of turn, um the main issue is the stack, which clears all of their hazardous waste. That, my understanding is, is an owner requirement, we all need to realize that the owner is different than the licensee applicant. So that adds another layer, but that was my question, because I know for a fact we found 39 versus five.
Yeah, and I mean, that's where I kept the motion as contingent on successful board of health code enforcement, fire inspections to resolve those. Those issues and to highlight it, I just wanted to highlight in case um someone said, well, you know, what is a class two license? Class two licenses specifically for buying and selling secondhand motor vehicles.
So this is just a class two?
Yes.
Not one and three?
No. Class uh class one ends up being a dealership, um when they're doing also new and warranted versus class two is then stepped down. Then you have class three, which is the junk.
Yeah.
Um and then that's, in some ways, it almost sounds like you're, they're getting close to that, but their application is for a class two.
Yeah. I don't have any questions.
Add it?
Yeah, I don't have any more, just that was.
Make a motion.
I move that the board vote to approve the 2024 class two license renewal application for precision auto center contingent on successful. Board of Health code enforcement and fire department inspections.
Second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Your reaction, did you buy it?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I didn't mean.
Aye.
And I usually so, so spoke of right.
Town managers report.
Okay, so as you, and and you all have a copy of this, and I'll be posting it online as well. Um as you can tell from our presentation with financial director, Ben Costa. Um we are in full swing in development of FY25 budget, I've been meeting with staff to review submissions and capital requests. And we're working to finalize town managers FY25 budget recommendation for distribution on February 5th. Uh also, annual reports um were due to our office um last week, and we're in the process starting to compile. Uh the annual report, I've had meetings with officials from Mendon Upton Regional School Districts as well as BBT to also talk about their. Um capital requests and operating budgets and for FY25, and those conversations are continuing to happen as well. Uh because their their budgets typically aren't really finalized until until March, so that's one of the challenges we have. Um with um budgeting here in Upton is is not only BBT, but then also being a regional school district. Um uh they have their own timeline, which uh differs from the town manager putting together a bunch of recommendation. Um uh as mentioned earlier, I'll be attending the uh annual Massachusetts Municipal Association Conference uh later this week. And Governor Healy will be in attendance uh to speak about the state's FY25 budget and anticipated um, you know, fiscal condition. Uh there's also sessions kind of that are going to be about uh town finances, uh state finances and and providing guidance, so. Uh that conference is always uh great for for hearing about things for the upcoming year from a financial standpoint. Uh I'm going to be, as well as other department heads, we're going to be attending a career fair on Fri- Friday, January 26th at Nimmo High School. Um one of the students has made this a project for uh for DECA, Distributed Vegetations Club of America. Um where she's organizing it, so myself, town clerk, assessor, we're gonna um give a little bios, talk, talk about our jobs, and we're gonna have a. Table to talk about municipal jobs, have that job fair, so. Uh as Denise mentioned, we're uh gearing up for all the elections. Um the first thing, early voting will be at Town Hall, February 24th through uh March 1st, uh for the March 5th. Uh presidential primary, also uh dog licenses for 24 have now started. I think people put this on the calendar and people have, when we had snow today, a lot of people were coming in to actually just.
Yeah.
Um so uh good for them uh coming in uh to get that taken care of. And um also Denise has been doing a great job talking with Mendon Upton officials to uh pre- prepare and discuss logistics for the elections. Because this is uh for our school district as well as um for the town, uh you know, presidential election years are pretty busy and involve a lot of moving parts and setup. Uh I think I may have mentioned um to you all individually, but we we finally tracked down that leak. And um there was a crack in the windshield that, you know, in the black area that then was causing in two different sections, so that's been fixed. Also, um uh Meals on Wheels has moved to uh sent from the center uh to the community center and um. Uh doing a good job getting uh things out to the community. Police Department, I think we've all experienced and many residents in town, all the power outages. Each time there was a power outage, there was also a police detail that was there with National Grid. They've been incredibly busy over the last two months, as have our fire emergency as well as DPW crews. Um uh so uh this has been a really tough uh stretch that we've been in. Uh recruitment also continues to be a focus and recently interviewed candidates for an open officer uh position. HR uh recreation director is working with HR on revising position job descriptions and hiring process and preparation for the 2024. Kids at play season as well as beach season. Uh and the recreation director has been working with myself and the DPW director to address some facility issues. Uh especially with the bathrooms prior to opening, uh making sure that they uh can get uh necessary inspections through uh Board of Health. And the recreation commission has been revisiting and having some meetings discussing the facility's master plan. And um specifically, they're looking for funding request for engineering studies uh for field space and new facility. Uh finance departments, uh bills for property and personal taxes due uh on February 1st, excise will be sent out the end of the month. And due 30 days later, uh they're also working to support uh the preparation of W2s. For anyone that's watching, that's a senior tax work off or uh employee, uh we don't print out W2s and mail them out. Uh employees and volunteer and senior tax work off, volunteers would have already received an email. Uh with instructions to access the W2 through employee forward. And if anyone has any issues, please contact the treasure collector's office for assistance resetting passwords. Uh code enforcement has also been pretty busy, they're dealing with uh not only uh initial public hearing for installation of lights. At the soccer field at Kiwanis, but they've also been working on inclusionary zoning bylaw and revised solar bylaw. Uh staff has also been uh receiving responses from consultants. Uh to do work under a MBTA Communities Technical Assistance Grant that we uh had received. Uh this will help develop the bylaw that we need in place uh prior to December 2025 to be compliant with MBTA communities. Uh staff is also working to address code compliance with the Upton Inn and continue enforcement against work being done without permits. Uh Board of Health, uh Fire and Code um have really, there there's new owners for the Upton Inn and there's, well. It's Admiral, though, they're putting in a lot of investment, they're doing a lot of work without necessary permits that. We're trying to make sure that they know the process and that we get appropriate inspections on the work that's being done. Also, staff continues to receive complaints about uh Airbnbs within town. And there's some areas within town that um to have an Airbnb, they need a special permit. It is permissible uh through a special permit, other areas aren't. So uh we're letting people know about what the processes are and where it can can occur and what that process ends up being. Uh and staff is working uh to support the Affordable Housing Trust. Not only to develop a request for proposals for sale and development of 25 Hartford Ave North, but also to uh conduct the trust action plan. Conservation is finishing up on permitting for the Grove Street Bridge. Part of that was also to transfer the mitigation work associated with the Upton Community Center. Um a wetland remediation and plantings that were part of that project, we're wrapping it into Grove Street. Because um it really wouldn't be appropriate to do uh plantings and some remediation when we're impacting it for that bridge project. So Dennis met with them and we'll meet with them for one final meeting to um take care of permitting for that bridge. Uh and a couple of weekends ago, a large volunteer effort successfully installed the new bridge over Warren Brook. Uh this was funded through a capital article um that uh had gone through uh at special town meeting in the fall. And um sort of continuing uh onto the Board of Health. COVID cases are increasing again, um public health nurse said while severity is less, experience transmission rate is higher. I I think everyone now is is finally being touched, even those that hadn't originally um gotten positive. Uh and we do have test kits that are available here, but they are uh quickly being uh snatched up. Uh thankfully, we are getting new supplies, um but um who knows how long that will, that will uh take as far as um how long we'll continue to have them. Um Board of Health is seeing an increase in applications for in-law apartments, um which increases septic system applications that they need to review and approve. And then lastly, uh tomorrow night was supposed to be a public hearing, continued public hearing for Upton Apartments, the 40B. Uh right next to Pickering, um the applicant has requested continuance to February 21st. Uh that will, that request for continuance will be granted, uh will be considered uh by the ZBA tomorrow night. Uh I anticipate that maybe we'll grant that continuance and that there won't be any testimony and that they'll have a larger uh meeting on February 21st.
Any questions? No questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um we'll open it up for public comment, anyone?
Hi, Lucy, I'm Rosina, Wall Street. I just want to mention, I just have some concerns. Uh I've been living in my homestead for 55 years and have never had any water problems uh at all. And these last couple of storms, we've had some major damage at my home. Due to the fact of Pratt Hill is across the street from my house, the whole hill has washed down into my yard. Um and I don't know the cause, I just know that it's never ever happened in 55 years. And I understand that we've had extreme water and extreme weather, I get that. Uh and we also have had extreme weather in past years. Um my biggest concern is that there's a dispute on who owns Pratt Hill, who owns, who should be maintaining that hill right now. Um my other concern is, is DPW did come to try to resolve the issue. Um with that being said, they don't, um I don't know, 10 yards, whatever yards, maybe 200 yards up this, up the hill, just don't the dirt. If we have a major contingency of a Pratt Hill, which consists of water tower and the cell tower for this town, there is no way. there is no way anyone is ever getting up there. So we need a helicopter to get anyone up there to, to help anything that's going on there. Okay, so I just need to address this. Um, my concern is I need to know who owns that property, who owns that. I, I need to know that. Um, like I said, the damage to my property is huge, huge. Uh, it contaminated my wall both times. We are drinking, we're drinking spring water. Um, I've never ever, fifty-five years, have ever had to go up by my water, never. And, um, it's very concerning to me. I, I don't know what happened, who, who's supposed to be maintaining that. But all of the gravel that was on that hill, this last storm, so we had a storm December eighteenth, we called, we made. And all my pictures, called and complained, DPW came, they brushed all the dirt back to the end of Pratt Hill, which was yards and yards of gravel on January tenth. All of that gravel landed in my front door, on my front steps, all of it. And my whole, my yard is a mess, an absolute disaster. And I, I spent good money to have my yard look very nice. So I, I just, like I said, my concern and what I would like to address is who owns the property? Who maintain, who is to maintain that?
Kenny's concerned. We find that out from.
Um, yeah, so.
Tank is up there.
The, um, uh, Dennis did talk to me, um, about that and, um, uh, we actually met with one of the, the Jason Property, he came in to my office to sort of talk about that. Dennis happened to be there. Um, and so there's a couple of things. We did find out that the land is actually owned by DCR. Um, it's good because then at least we can exert some sort of pressure on trying to come up with a solution. But we're also looking through, uh, past approvals for the cell tower to identify responsibility for the cell tower company, who would have access to see where the maintenance ends up being. Um, it sounds from my DPW Director that a couple of years ago, when someone may have been grading that, that they changed the pitch of that road because water used to go towards a specific area and now it's where it goes the other way, which then caused that water to come down and then come across the street and impact not only your property, but also your others. Um, uh, Dennis, um, has reached out to DCR to get approval to put in a diversion ditch to then capture so it doesn't come down. One of the, the challenges is this is like also the, it's so hard to try to address things. So they are only trying to do things for, um, communicating with people at DCR to try to identify solutions. And, uh, we've, we've asked code for, let's look and see what, what did the cell tower company have for any maintenance? Because we do need to identify what on a permanent ongoing basis needs to happen. Um, uh, and, um, you know, make sure that this doesn't happen again. I saw the, the pictures and they, they were literally when you say dirt on the front door, it's like on the front door.
And still have dirt.
Does DCR actually own the whole hill?
Um, they own the, uh, roadway going up, their extent of the property, those are things we're still trying to figure out. So we are, we are in the process trying to identify that and ultimate, uh, maintenance. Uh, but, um, in some ways, having it as DCR gives us a little bit more ability to, uh, work quietly to address something than versus a private owner. But as we know, sometimes when we're dealing with the state, its responsiveness can be very much an issue. And that's where having very engaged legislative delegation, uh, really I think will, will help us in this case as we identify a permanent solution.
Have we, um, contacted David Ridian or?
Not yet, because we're trying to, Dennis has talked to people at DCR and there's, they seem to be receptive as far as trying to address it. Um, so just need a little bit more time to, to get a better idea from Dennis as far as the tempering and permanent solutions to then let people that are directly impacted know what we can do in the short term. And then also, um, you know, once it gets to springtime to try to prevent it from happening.
Who owns the cell tower?
Um, I don't know the name of the, uh, the company who owns it. Those are, that's information we're trying to pull from code. And it's, and it's the conditions within the decision as well. That's important.
Yes.
See if the planning board required anything of that.
It's hard.
Whether it's just, just did, do they have an access, uh, of right for access and that's it. So we're trying to identify the, the scope. There's also, um, uh, some, some, uh, Native Americans will, will use that access road for, um, they have some approvals for gatherings at the top. We're just trying to get an idea for, for everyone who ultimately, um, is responsible. And, um, you know, what is the standard of that road that it should be maintained at? Because if someone comes in and is just trying to level something out, they could change that pitch and really cause a lot of things that happen.
Sorry, this has happened, but I, it sounds like we're working on it.
I just, I just didn't want to be, he said, she's, I just.
No.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. It, it needs to, it's. You know, I'm, I'm done drinking out of bottles.
Right.
So.
Sorry, it's happened.
All right. Thank you for my free time.
Thank you. The acceptance of resignation of the, um, Library Trustee.
I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to accept the resignation of Dominique Ross from the Board of Library Trustees with regrets.
I second the motion. All those in favor?
Aye. So.
And the library trustees have not requested to.
Correct. I was gonna add that. And, uh, we do have Matthew on. If, if the board had any questions, I did confirm with the Chair of the Library Trustees, um, that because we are so close, I mean, we're, we're two and a half weeks out from nomination papers, um, that, uh, not filling it immediately, they're still able to make sure that they have a form for conducting business. Um, so they, um, the, the Chair had said, you know, waiting for the election was, was acceptable.
Okay. And as we'll section, uh, next on the agenda is discussion of Board of Selectmen priorities for twenty twenty-four.
I didn't have the time to go in here and put my rankings in, so, uh, maybe we can.
No, I haven't either.
Did I? Table.
Well, I guess none of us did our homework. No, we did not.
Hey, having the list is a lot of progress. Baby, baby steps, baby steps.
Yeah, there you go. Okay, then we'll put this off till the next meeting. That good? I pictured it with full intentions. I just never got to it. All right, initial review of annual town meeting warrant articles.
Okay, so, um.
Can we keep it at twenty-seven?
That would be nice, but I know, um, we're not gonna have that. Um, however, I did try, this, this includes department requests, um, includes the planning boards, inclusionary zoning bylaw. Um, I don't really know what else is out there. Uh, usually people are asking about what is the deadline and I get some sort of idea. Um, right now, if I say any, if I try to guess anymore, then we're gonna get slammed. So let's just knock on wood and, and hope this is it. Uh, but you have your standard articles, um, that we see year in, year out. Uh, and then the last half ends up being more of the, the, the funding articles. Um, I was gonna raise it when, when Kenny was here, but I knew I had this later on in the meeting. So when he identified, um, the, sort of the summary balance budget, um, he identified that there was a, a, um, one hundred thousand dollar, uh, article for roads. That's from raised and appropriate, so that's general fund. Um, as we know from when we talked with Dennis Westgate, he'd like us to be in the five to six hundred. Um, and right now have it as six hundred with one hundred for raised and appropriate, one hundred K, not one hundred dollars. I just see, saw that. Um, and, uh, five hundred from free cash. Um, when I first put out the request for, um, for guidance and I, I had Kenny run with all of the requests that came in, where were we from a budget perspective? We were five hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars in the red. Um, I've worked to, uh, eliminate the twenty-four thousand. Um, the whole six hundred thousand that was being paid from raised and appropriate, I pulled five hundred out because I don't know where the schools are gonna be. I, I do firmly believe that we need to get back on schedule with roads. And talking to, um, uh, to Dennis, uh, he also got in revised numbers for Fiscav, which is currently anticipating. Um, so the two roads projects, the Fiscav and then this, um, still ends up being a million dollars for roads that he has a considerable amount already set aside to do Fiscav and only needs another five hundred thousand to finish that project. He then still has, um, five hundred thousand coming in on chapter ninety. So plus this, we have over a million dollars for new work, which then lets us really pull together projects that really have an impact. So this is sort of initially, I know as we go through and we have budget meetings, we're gonna be discussing this, you know, in FinCon, but this is the initial, um, sort of, uh, read of, um, uh, roads and appropriation. We have the standard placeholder for snow and ice. Um, should we need it? Unfortunately, this year we might need some of it, standard conservation, standard CPC articles. Um, that the Capitol request really start coming in with twenty-one, uh, with the one-time DPW replacement, a, um, second cruiser, ones in the, ones in the budget, one through free cash, which the town has done every other year. Um, it, this way, uh, we have, uh, major plumbing work that needs to be done at the police station. Um, either a fire engine refurbishment or drain repair at the fire station. We're working to pull together quotes to see if one, um, bumps above the other one. For example, uh, the Capitol Plan had the engine one refurbishment at five hundred K. But ca- quotes are coming back that it's closer to one hundred. Um, uh, drain repair was a FY twenty-six request, um, slated in there. And, uh, we're looking to revise that because that should be able to come in closer to the fifty range. So we're still taking closer look. Uh, the next one, the chief requested an article for replacing message boards. Uh, Dennis is proposing to, out of the three message boards, to replace one through water, uh, retained earnings so that the request would be reduced down by twenty thousand so that we'd only fund two. Um, we have the Qantas Beach sand replacement in there and then.
It'd be nice. It's gotta be nice.
Um, so I don't know if, from past discussions, I don't know if there was something else that maybe the board had as far as ideas that we want to put in as a placeholder. The warrant does close the, the twenty-sixth.
Is the refurbishment a hundred thousand or fifty thousand?
Uh, the plan indicated it as fifty, but some of the estimates we're getting back are closer to a hundred.
Hundred and the drain.
The drain was bookmarked at one hundred, but looking at it, it'll probably be closer to fifty. So we may swap because the drain, it has to be done. If anyone's been in fire station, you can see they've patched and they drip, but it's almost like it's sticking out. Um, we're trying to, they're trying to refine both numbers, um, because, uh, it's a question whether or not for the drain repair, you, you need, um, uh, for, uh, oil and water separators, whether or not what we have is adequate for updated code. So that's what they're looking at. And some of those two, if we don't have numbers, that may slide to the special in fall. Um, because we'd hate to have a placeholder and then, hey, we, we, we didn't have our numbers, so we just asked for fifty. We don't want to do that.
We want to have an estimate.
Well, and that can be done too in the fall or.
Exact, exactly.
Side.
Yeah. So this is just where things are looking at right now. Um, I've been in touch with this, the, the Chair of the Capitol Budget Committee to schedule meetings. Um, trying to get one before the warrant closes. Um, and then there's, there's meetings in February, early February that he's trying to pull together a meeting to go over the existing requests as well as to, to really take a concerted effort at updating the whole Capitol Plan. Because there's a lot of facilities things that we really need to get going on. Um, and, um, uh, it's while it's identified in a due solutions report, um, prioritizing, uh, making sure that the dollar amount is appropriate, getting some more realistic quotes. Those are all things we need to pull together first and, and from a capital planning process. Um, we need probably six months before coming out with a, a really workable Capitol Plan.
Okay. Questions or question questions?
No questions.
Okay. Next is the review of, of draft flag policy. That was a lot of reading.
Yes, it was.
Just saying.
Hey, I did it. I did it before the last meeting, so that was easy for me.
Does anybody have any questions or suggestions or?
The policy.
The short one?
Yeah. Right here.
Which is.
Policy for the Exhibition of Flags and Town Buildings and Parking, slide, page forty-three.
Right? That's, that's the one that I would, I would recommend.
Questions? No questions? Could we have them?
Is that what you, okay?
That's, yes.
We call it the short flag policy.
Short flag policy, yes. I didn't know how else to say it.
Right, there it is. I move that the board.
That is gonna come back one day and bite you. There's just no two ways you bite it. They're gonna be, what's a short flag?
Right. I have a long flag I want to hang up on the pole.
Exactly.
Move that the board vote to adopt the short flag policy, flag and ceremonial.
Sorry.
Sure, okay, yeah, I, I see, yeah. I move that the board vote to adopt the short flag policy as prepared by Town Council and as amended with an effective date of Wednesday, January.
I, I put tomorrow.
January seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four.
I second the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Now as action.
Uh, please go, you, thank you. Day after your last meeting, uh, he did a webinar.
On, on the black.
By policy. And I, I sat through it. I, I, I sat through the whole thing because I had a whole life.
I beg to differ.
But it was, you know, it was basically what was in that.
Packet.
Packet that was circulated, but.
Well, that was circulated.
Yeah. The issue becomes, if it moves, you pay council fee. And that lead case that they talked about, that council fee was like two hundred.
Yeah.
That's why we enacted a policy.
Sure, I'm.
Because I don't think we've had anything but the federal flag, state flag.
Yeah, I've never heard or seen.
No.
Any flag, hubbleoo, until now.
And there are many communities that, that have opened it up. I mean.
Yeah. It's all fine till it's not fine.
Right.
It's one of those, like, you open a Pandora's box.
Yeah.
You got it.
Yep. I think that's it.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, it came out in stereo.
I second.
All those in favor?